Meeting of the Planning Commission, everyone can rise to say the pledge of allegiance. Kristin, do you do the roll call?
Yes.
Commissioner Dolan?
Here.
Chair Kempner?
Here.
Commissioner Hamame?
Here.
Commissioner Ernstman?
Here.
And Commissioner Woods?
Here.
And thankfully, we no longer have to approve absences. Approval of the agenda.
I have one note on that.
Yes.
If someone could please motion to add election of officers, that is something that I accidentally left out.
I would like to make a motion to add the election of officers to tonight's agenda, August 26th.
We'll make that number six. All right, do we have to vote on that and then, or that's just the agenda with that?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Oh, there we go. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, amended agenda approved. Approval of the minutes of May 27th, 2025. Are there any changes or motions?
Move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Communications. Kristin, do we have any communications?
Just a couple things. You had the latest issue of the Michigan Association of Planning Magazine for everyone. And then included in the online packet for the commission's information was a report from the Michigan Municipal League. Several city staff and some council people had the opportunity to walk west 12 mile from about Tyler-ish to Greenfield and talk to the Michigan Municipal League and some COG about ideas that they might have for how to reinvigorate that area a little bit more. So those are detailed in the report. I'm happy to share, a lot of them are in the zoning ordinance already. But if there's anything that's of particular interest, feel free to send me an email.
Thank you. Citizen comments. This is for items not on the agenda. You'll be able to comment on agenda items when we get there. If anyone would like to comment, you have three minutes. Come to the microphones, state your name and city of residence. Do I have any comments for items not on the agenda? Okay. Moving on, new business. PSU 02252114, 11 Mile. Kristin, would you like to give us a rundown?
Okay, this is a property that is located at Henley and 11 Mile. It's been vacant for quite a number of years at this point. It's in the Flex District. It previously operated as a gas station and automotive service station, but that non-conforming use, which was non-conforming in the old ordinance, the new ordinance does allow gas stations as a special land use. That nonconformity was lost, the use was lost, because it was vacant for so long. So now, the applicant is here applying for a special land use approval to occupy that as a gas station. This would come in under the new ordinance standards. So if you'll remember, we did change those a little bit, and they're detailed in my staff review letter. I will just briefly go through several of them. One is compatibility with adjacent land uses. You'll notice that I mentioned that the impacts from a small gas station with no service station, so they will not be occupying the service station area at this time, would not be significantly more than what they were when this previously operated as a gas station and service station and would complement the nearby uses. Compatibility with the master plan. I have noted that the proposal is compatible with the recommendations of the master plan. Traffic impacts are another thing that the commission should consider. The site currently has three driveways allowing for adequate circulation around the site. Again, this is a fairly small gas station on one of our main thoroughfares, 11 Mile, so traffic impacts are not expected to be that detrimental to the surrounding properties. Impact on public services. This is a site that was previously developed, already connected to city utilities. There's not anticipated to be any other additional impact on public services. Compliance with the zoning ordinance standards. There are a couple things that I recommended the commission ask the applicant about in order to better comply with the zoning ordinance standards. Just for a point of reference, the applicant is not proposing to really alter the site at all. They'll be putting in some parking lot striping and things like that, but other than that, the site's going to stay as is. So when we were looking at this to determine whether or not it complies with zoning ordinance standards, we're only looking at it in terms of what are they touching? What are the special land use characteristics that we can apply? And then lastly, since there are some specific use standards for gas stations, what are those? So compliance with zoning ordinance standards, I was really trying to focus on the special land use aspect and how it might adversely affect surrounding properties. So one of those things is that there are existing lights on the property, but they're not shielded. So I would recommend that the commission request that those lights be shielded to keep light spill over from going onto adjacent properties. Secondly, the site is paved basically edge to edge. There's no green space right now. I think that it would be fair to ask the applicant to provide some green space, either in the form of planters or in the review identified a small, I identified a small area of pavement that could perhaps be removed, and some green space could be put in there. I think it'd be worth a conversation with the applicant to see how they're willing to potentially incorporate that. Moving on, there's a couple more factors to consider. Impact on the overall environment, given that this is already a developed paved site. There's no new environmental impacts proposed. And then there are several additional factors that mostly reiterate the things that we previously discussed. One of the things that I pointed out there is we will need to confirm the hours of operation. That hasn't been provided yet. And then lastly, moving on to the automotive use standards. There are several standards in the zoning ordinance that are specific to automotive uses. Those would be service stations and gas stations. In this case, only the gas station standards would apply, and most of those have to do with the canopy. There's no canopy proposed here. But there is a setback required for the pump islands. The pump islands are existing. They do not intend to move them. But one of the pump islands is located too close to 11 Mile. The front yard setback is required to be 30 feet. 16 feet is what is provided. So they will need to get a zoning board of appeals variance for that deficient setback. And again, that particular setback standard applies because we're talking about automotive uses as a special land use. None of the other setback standards, we aren't looking at any of those because that non-conforming site still gets to continue since they're not touching those aspects of the site. And I can try to explain that better if that wasn't clear, please let me know. There is room for an adequate number of parking spaces, but I would ask that the commission confirm with the applicant the number of employees at any given time. And then those would be striped eventually in place. We would review that as part of a striping plan just through an administrative process we do in the Community Development Department. The Planning Commission's asked to hold the public hearing tonight and to make a recommendation to council who will ultimately approve or deny special use. Let me know if you have any questions or if that was not clear.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I'm not clear on the fact that it's a legal non-conforming structure, why it needs to comply with the setbacks for gas stations.
Yeah.
It was a gas station before.
It was a gas station before, but for the intents and purposes of the ordinance, that doesn't really come into play. Because in our old ordinance, gas stations in this particular property under the old zoning district were not a permitted use. So it was a non-conforming use at one point. It was abandoned for a number of years, more than two, which would have been the standard. So that non-conforming use status was lost. Then, we have the new ordinance that came into play just here recently in the spring. In the new ordinance in the Flex District, which this property is, gas stations are a special land use. So in talking with the city attorney, obviously the special land use standards would apply, but he also felt that we could apply the automotive use standards because those standards are related to that particular use, and that particular use is listed as a special land use.
And since it's lost, its nonconformity would have to comply
with the use, yes.
With all the special land use standards, including gas station.
Right.
Okay.
My question is, so there's the gas stations, there's the service area, which they don't intend to use right now.
Correct.
What happens? What is the process? What does it look like for us, for you, if they decide at some point to utilize that? Whether that's expanding the store space or whether using it as a service, or how?
So if it was expanding the store space, let's say, then we would look at that administratively, and we would see if they had enough parking. Really, that's all it would come down to. And then obviously building permits and all of those things. If they were going to use it as a service area, we would do this whole process again because that is also listed as a special land use in the Flex District.
Okay. Any other questions or clarifications before I open the public hearing? I guess I will also give the applicant, before I open the public hearing, I will give the applicant an opportunity to come up if you want to add anything to the presentation.
Very briefly, my name is Ellis Friedman. I represent FADI KJ, he's FNL Berkeley. We do want to make it clear that this would be a gas station, not a service station at this time.
Yeah, I'm having trouble hearing you. Can you speak into the microphone a little closer?
I'm Ellis Friedman. I represent FNL Berkeley. FADI KJ here to my left. Our intention is not to make it a service station, it's to be a gas station. The pumps are approved, pumps and tanks are approved by the state. They've remained so all through this period of time. So there's no real significant change. All it is, is basically opening the business that's been closed. And the requirement, from talking to Kristin, is that before that can happen, FADI, who's already scheduled an appeal to the ZBA, will be asking for the variance for the setback that already is in place and has been in place for, I think, decades, actually. So we're really not proposing any changes, certainly not any increase in the intensity of the use. It would be lesser than what it was before. So we're asking for you to recommend it.
Thank you.
Sorry, I have a question. So when you say no change in intensity, do you mean no service station use?
No service station. We're in a C store and a gasoline business, just like candy, candy and beverage.
Convenience.
Convenience store.
All right, I'm going to open the public hearing at 7:13. And same thing, if you would like to comment on this, come up, state your name, city of residence, and you have three minutes to tell us what you think. Going once, going twice. I will close the public hearing at 7:14.
Chair Kempner? We also received no comments via email or mail or anything like that.
Thank you.
I would like to add, again, sorry. We don't have any objections to the recommendations from Kristin regarding the planters and the light shield. There's no, it's not an issue.
Perfect, thank you. Actually, I guess I do need to get some clarification on hours of operation and number of employees. Whomever can answer that.
So.
I think number of employees is for parking purposes, yes.
So numbers of employees is going to be one per shift. This is a very small place. And hours of operation, we are planning to open 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. And if the city has a problem with that, we can adjust the hours.
Okay. Thank you.
Discussion, thoughts?
Can I use, Kristin?
Yep.
Is there any hour requirements in our zoning ordinance for stations?
No, there are no hour requirements, just so the commission's aware.
Thank you.
In the realm of special use?
Yes.
Any thoughts?
I guess that is a good point. If car doors are opening and closing and cars are making beeping noises that can go into 11, and there's residential uses, right, adjacent?
Does, you know, it's on the corners. So when I visited today, it was back, right? So there's a house, a garage, and then the wall.
Yeah, there's a screen wall.
There is a screen wall, so it would be these residences that are to the rear of the property that would be closest.
We have not heard from any of those residences?
Correct.
Do we know the hours of operat-- I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do we know the hours of operation when the station was there previously? Is it consistent with previous hours?
I don't know.
We don't know. Do you know, sir?
So for the last about seven to eight years, the gas station would never operate as actually a gas station. They had everything where it stands today, but they weren't selling gas. Only thing, they were doing a car repair. They were selling a little bit of snacks out of the small store. But they were not, so the mechanic shop was open from like 9:00 a.m. to like 5:00 p.m. Yeah, 5:00 or 6:00, just on mechanic hours.
Right. Okay, thank you.
So looking at street view, it looks like, it's hard to tell because it's a lot of shrubbery right there, but it looks like maybe there's a screen wall for part of it, but then up next to the road, maybe 10 feet or so, it's just a guardrail.
When I went today, it looked like, I didn't see a guardrail. It looked like it stepped down.
It might not be there anymore. Well, this is image date from July, from last month.
Yeah, it's there.
It might have just been covered with greenery, and so it looked like it was just a step down. Because the step down makes sense if you're pulling out of there, it can't be all the way up.
You can't go all the way to the side.
Is that where the curb cut is though?
It's not, yeah.
It doesn't look like a curb cut. I think the curb cuts to the.
It's further south.
Yeah.
So there's a curb cut here. This is the area I was saying could potentially become some sort of greenery.
Yeah. Maybe it could wrap greenery. Well, they're required to put a screen wall in, aren't they?
But that would be an existing non-conforming part of the site.
So how, I guess I'm trying to think of a creative solution. Is there, is there a mechanism to where we could say 11 is fine, but every year it's going to be evaluated so that if we get complaints, then we adjust the time, or?
I think you could, but.
It'd be hard to monitor.
It would be hard to monitor, and we would only count official complaints that are logged as a complaint called into code enforcement. And I would say, for staff's purposes, I would want the commission and ultimately the council to define what constitutes enough complaints.
Yeah.
Agreed. If somebody isn't there.
Yeah, it would be an administrative nightmare.
What did we do for the previous gas station? I think it was in May, April?
I don't think we limited their hours.
I don't think we did either.
Is that one on Coolish?
No, on Greenfield.
At 12 Mile and Greenfield, a corner property.
The mug and jug.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I keep forgetting, this is 11 Mile. I mean, it's not like it is a.
Well, and I feel like if there were houses, you know, if it was on the side of a house, I would feel differently, but I feel like, you know, you have your whole house, then some space, then the garage, then some space, then the gas station space, then your pumps.
It's not like there's a bedroom window right next to there.
Yeah. I would love to see that railing be some sort of a screen wall instead, just for the headlights.
I don't know that they can know because of the clear vision triangle.
But you'd come that opposite.
Well, that's not a curb cut, though.
Right, this is kind of this weird no man's.
So it would be enough.
Yeah.
So it would be enough.
Yeah.
I would assume that we wouldn't want it, well, I guess even close to the sidewalk would be fine. But that is a non-conforming part of the site.
I think there's sketch showed parking head in.
Yes.
Right, so that's my thought. Like, if your bedroom is in the back of that house, you know, then are you going to have headlights shining in?
Yeah. So the last meeting, the guy that lives in the house, he came and he wanted the gas station really bad opening. And it's in the minutes of.
So for history purposes or context, before the new ordinance was passed, they applied to the zoning board of appeals for a use variance. So that was the meeting where the adjacent resident came out.
So the neighbors came and they wanted the gas station open.
How do you all feel about adding a bit of a screen wall where that guardrail is? Does that feel like something that you'd be willing to do, or no?
Honestly, we spent so much money and we've been paying payments on this place for the last four or five years. I mean, if we have to, we do it. We don't want to do it. I'm going to be very honest with you. You know? We were at a point to lose this property before closure.
Can I say? Sure.
I guess, Kristin, is that the tree you were referring to in the staff? Okay. And that would be, you guys would be amenable to remove the tree there?
I was just saying it could be trimmed.
Trim, okay, okay.
Yeah, I mean, those things, whatever you require, we're going to get it done. The shield for the lights, the liners, you know?
Who owns, is that Green Strip owned by the house?
That's the next door.
The next door.
So.
So that's behind the guardrail, that green?
Yes.
So it's, that building that we're looking at on the screen, though, that building is the garage.
Yes.
And the house is beyond that.
Yes.
So in light of that, and in light of the fact that this is already an existing site, then I don't, I'm fine with it. What do you guys think?
Are you guys planning on, it looks like the pavement's kind of beat up. Are you planning on resurfacing it, or?
Yes.
Okay. So it's definitely going to be improvement over what's there.
It's good, it's all going to get fixed up, whatever, but I mean, we don't, we spent money, we painted it and everything, and then, you know, we couldn't open it. So all that stuff went away. Now we got to come back and do all that, all over. At least drive the park alive.
So what's separating the service station from that backyard beyond the greenery there? Is it, is that?
That's a wall.
That metal guardrail that goes all the way through?
No, it's actually a real wall, like cinder block.
Yeah, there's a cinder block.
Yeah.
Oh, there you go.
Oh, see, okay.
It does step down. It steps down below.
This is just, when I readjusted street view, this must be from several years ago now.
July, okay, so it's from 2012, that's still there?
Yeah, so the reason is like a stairs because you can't make a straight because cars has to see who's coming from the street. So unless the city wants a straight. I think the flooring is there, so.
He did have the guardrail there to protect the sidewalk and that old image.
Yeah, but they were talking about putting liners on, I think, right along the right away.
Planners on that side.
Yeah, which would be better than a guardrail.
That's how useful.
In 2012?
I don't. Okay.
So is that something you would consider building back up?
No, that's not.
Okay, because I'm looking at this July 2025.
So let's see if we can go.
Yeah, you can still see the brick.
It's here, it's just under all of it.
Yeah, it's just covered in ivy and stuff.
You can zoom in, you can still see all the bricks.
I think it's different than guardrail along the right away.
I feel like there's, yeah, more bricks got taken off, but, yeah, okay.
I'm okay with no screen wall there.
Yeah.
That feels okay to me. It's not, if there was a house right.
Yeah, if that was a house and not a garage.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. I agree.
Did you, I guess, so on the side of the property from the asphalt to the sidewalk, would you guys, are you proposing to put anything there? Because I mean, I can see someone backing out, turning into the sidewalk there.
Oh, you want to put like a bumper post?
Yeah, bumper, something barrier.
Yeah, we can do that.
Something just to protect people from the sidewalk.
We could work the greenery into it.
Right, like a planter or something instead of a block.
And I can work with Kristin to see what she had to commend, you know?
Would there be an opportunity too, to ride along that guardrail slash screen wall to cut the pavement and plant a couple of trees in there? Maybe not trees, but shrubberies?
You mean, like right in front of the guardrail in their parking lot?
Yeah, like cut it out, like cut out a five foot wide section along there.
I feel like whatever you tried to put there would probably die.
Well, and also, we don't know whose property line it is. They may have paved all the way to the.
And the area you see, I don't know if you guys see it or not, that's where the tanks get, where the gas truck gets dropped gas. But a planter, yeah. But a planter, yeah, it's, it's doable. Or you can build like high ones.
Right.
And they could be used as a planter and as a bumper, like.
Yeah.
As a stopper from going to the sidewalk.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Nothing in ground, because, yeah, I see you have where the tanks are.
So, they'll be above the ground.
Yeah, yeah. But just prevent a car from.
Yeah, and there'll be waters and flowers, but even though, you know, you can't plant flowers now.
Sure.
Right. Um, and the lights definitely need to be shielded.
Sure.
Question for Kristen. If we condition approval on the light shielding, the ZBA variance, and added landscaping and planters, would the landscaping, would you look at that from an administrative site plan process, since they haven't submitted a site plan yet?
Yes, and this is really, the sketch plan that they submitted is really all that's required. So, we would just work with them to make sure they're incorporating planters. And if the commission wants to be specific in saying they would like to see planters along Henley.
Yeah.
That's even more helpful.
So, they don't need to submit like a full site plan set for a special land use?
They just have to submit a sketch plan.
Well, how do you verify the landscaping is appropriate and stays there? I mean, you and I know, over the years, things change, people move things. How do we confirm where it was approved so that if it's moved?
We, I would have them add it to their sketch plan. So, it wouldn't be like a landscape architect's stamped plan. It would just be added to the, to the sketch they submitted.
And we can even build those prior to opening, but now plan nothing in it because it's going to die, you know, when it's discovered. I don't have any problem, just to prove to you guys that we are willing to do it. So, we'll build them and we'll put sand in them, whatever.
We, we believe you.
Maybe some skeletons.
We believe you, but we also have to think about this plan you might sell, and this plan stays with the property 20, 30 years from now.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
Or maybe I'll be here another 30 years, if God will.
I hope so, God willing.
So, if they have one employee per shift, I'm counting, um, nine. 14 cars? There's spaces for 14 cars plus whatever, however many cars you can get by the pumps. Is it over?
They have spaces for 11 cars.
Five cars, five, five, five.
I'm sorry, not, they have spaces for nine cars, like parking spaces on the site.
Oh, is the.
I don't.
I s, I see five cars at the very bottom of this sketch.
Yep, five cars there and four cars closer to the garage door, um.
And then there's five cars along the north property line.
Right, and they require three spaces for the retail space, one space for employee. So, that's four spaces. And then for the fueling, um, area, those are the pump spaces. So, they have more than enough parking.
Yeah, I, what I'm getting at is they got plenty of parking.
Yes.
Maybe we could.
Where's that one?
Uh, yeah, I don't know. The five cars on the bottom, is that, yeah, is that, is that the street car parking on that sketch?
Straight car, is that what you said?
Street. Street parking?
No, no, that's not street parking.
On that sketch, can you pull that up?
That, yeah.
Sorry, making you.
Oh, we're at the bottom where it says five cars, is that what you're asking about?
Yeah, yeah. Go scroll over to the bottom. It says five cars at the very, very bottom.
So, this is indicating five cars here.
Right, but then there's five cars underneath those two tanks.
Yep, that's the same five cars.
Oh, okay.
It just is written twice.
Okay.
Five cars fit in this area of the site.
Gotcha.
So, there's nine.
Yes.
That's nine, thank you.
Also, along that line, with the tanks being right there, I find it hard to think that we were, even if they were interested in trying to add green space right there, I feel like that's going to be too hairy of a situation.
You, you can't cut on top of the tank.
Right, yeah.
That's, that's impossible.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Because you'll be exposing the tank.
Yeah.
And that's, I mean, not the stage.
And I imagine you probably have some access manholes to, you know.
But on top of it, the planter, you could do like how you like, amend it.
Did we get through all the?
Yeah, the things that.
Admin question. I guess, except for the thoughts on the variance, the pump offset from the.
I mean, that's, that's the ZBA decision, not an us decision.
So, any motion would need to be con, subject to the light shielding, landscaping and planters.
Well, I would like to be specific that they would be along Henley there. Do we need to be that specific in the motion so that it?
It's up to you guys.
I just don't want to tie planning's hands to along Henley if the planters don't work there for whatever reason. If it ends up blocking driveways, or if it ends up interfering with where the fuel trucks come in. I want to be able to give them the flexibility to place the locations.
I also want to make sure that we have something in there that says something has to be along that.
So, I, you could, you could say planters are a barrier along Henley for safety purposes. And then I would ask that, so planters could mean I went to English Gardens and got a little pot of flowers, or it could be something much more substantial. So, just to have somewhere in the record, I'm assuming you guys are looking for something a little bit more substantial than just a pot of flowers.
Assuming it's practicable.
Yes.
At the location, yes.
Well, there's guardrail there previously, and that was post-mounted. So, there probably should be something there to protect the people walking on the sidewalk. From vehicles parking and backing out.
Or even just thinking they can drive, like.
Right, drive right off.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Because it's not, it's a shallow.
Sometimes it's not.
So, the bump, the bumpers, uh, posts, whatever it is, those things, they were in our mind to put it in the area. But if you guys want the flower, planters will, will replace those with the flower. I, I'll, I'll do it, whatever you guys want.
Yeah.
I mean, do, do we have to be specific on, like, I'm thinking, i- immovable barriers at a flower plant, right?
Yes, that could be an option, but since the tanks are there, you wouldn't want to prevent the trucks from coming in to be able to access the tanks. It might require a little bit more looking at.
Right, just, I mean, I'm thinking longitude and the world's not very wide.
Right, so if we can find something that works and they can still access the tank, great. If not, maybe planters could go, um, closer to the front doors or something like. I mean, there's space on the site that they could fit somewhere.
I think we've asked all of our questions for you. You are welcome to sit back down. You don't have to stand there.
Thanks.
So, Kristen.
Yes.
Um, I, I'm feeling like we need some guidance from you. You're hearing us. That we do prefer more substantial planters, um, to delineate the sidewalk. As well as adding some greenery of some sort, to the extent practicable.
Yes, that's perfect.
That's enough to say?
That's enough. I guess I would add too, that if planters cannot be placed along Henley, you would like to see some sort of barrier there.
Safety.
And the planters placed somewhere else on the site.
Perfect. Break that down so we can make a motion.
I don't remember what I said.
You phrased it really well.
Um.
Um, landscaping.
But I would prefer to not see there as a guardrail, like a metal guardrail.
Yeah, I mean.
Right, I mean.
I would like form to play a role into that. I don't know.
Right.
We could spell that out.
I mean, I'm guessing you would not like to see a guardrail there either, so.
You're talking about the, what's existing there?
No, the, i- if you can't put a planter there.
Oh, you don't want to see a guardrail.
I, I don't want to see another guardrail there, right?
I agree with that. But that could be, um, maybe just a bumper block?
I mean, right, I'd rather see a bumper block than a guardrail.
Yeah, I would too.
Issue with that is overhang. If it was a little bit further, I think, from the sidewalk. So, again, I think there'd have to be some more detailed look at it.
Do we have to specify that we don't want a guardrail there?
It'd be.
I mean, like, that would not be your choice. You were trying to.
I would say that the applicant should make every effort to place planters along Henley. If they cannot be placed there because of the need to maneuver trucks to access the tanks. And at the very least, there should be some sort of separation barrier that the guardrail is the least preferred option.
If they're maneuvering trucks over the sidewalk, that would be a problem anyways.
Right, right. Yes, but I'm even thinking, I don't know, I, I think it'd be wor, we would probably have to go out there and actually see. This is not a, the sketch plan is not a dimensioned plan to see and measure out how much space there is.
I suspect they probably would fuel, they would back in off of 11 Mile. And fuel, because I can see where the, I can see where the access is.
Right, the access is all right there.
Yeah.
So, they are not allowed to back in, just, just.
They're not allowed. So, how do they, how do they pull in?
So, they have to come, I'm sorry. So, they have to come from an interest and exit out of the other interest. Like, this is the law for the police and fire. The fuel truck cannot back in into the road and actually block the road. You know, because takes them like.
Oh, sure.
Like a five minutes just to get out.
Yeah.
So, they probably pull in while.
So, they have to pull in the front, from an.
And then pull out.
Opening and exit on an opening.
Gotcha.
I have a question for Kristen.
Mm-hmm.
The setback that they have to get from Henley, um, from the ZBA, is that from Henley or from 11?
11 Mile. And if they, they do have enough parking to lose a space to planters, so I really think it's just making sure that, that trucks can maneuver.
Mm-hmm.
Um, anybody else have additional thoughts? Do we feel as though all the standards for a special use have been met?
We should probably take a standard at that, shouldn't we?
Okay, this is the first one, right?
Oh, man, I think it is.
Well, Kristen did a good job of outlining it in her report as well.
Hey, he said, I guess, also, if you do make the motion. Remember to probably, uh, add revised sketch on there as well. That'll need to be contingent. Because they revise the sketch and submit to the city.
Do we need to add that they have to give you a revised sketch, or that's just part of what you?
We'll just.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Um, well, I guess. Do you want to run us?
Um, all right, compatibility with adjacent uses.
I think this is 11 Mile. Uh, it's a very small operation. It's been there before. Um, I, I think it's compatible with adjacent uses.
There's other businesses on 11 Mile on both sides, yeah.
Um, compatibility with the master plan?
It, it was listed as a flex space, right?
Mm-hmm.
Flex district.
Flex district. So, it would fit within that, right?
Traffic impact?
Was the gas station before?
That was the gas station before.
It's only a couple of pumps.
Yeah, no additional pumps or services, so.
Um. Impact on public services.
And let, let's also add that there's three driveways.
There's three driveways.
As usual. But that's helpful for circulation.
Impact on public services.
It's fine, it's an existing facility with orange store hookup. It's not large enough to need detention.
No plan to expand.
Um, compliance with zoning standards. I think we kind of will include how we feel like they can get up to those as best as possible when we make the motion, right?
Isn't the only one we're applying is the gas station standards?
Yes.
So.
Right.
And that was the one where Kristen.
Wouldn't we, no matter what, demand a business shield their lights?
Yes.
Yes.
Like, whether they've been there for 100 years or two years, you have to shield your lights.
Yes, we would ask them to shield their lights. Now, if they had been open and operating for 50 years with unshielded Cobra-style, old-school lights, we would ask them to shield their lights. We would make sure that, in some instances, right, they might be able to tilt them down or something. We would work with them. But since this station, um, is a special land use in this district, I think you would have even more reason to request that they shield their lights because that's an impact as a result of operating this special land use.
Gotcha. Um. Impact on overall environment? It was already a gas station. It's not increasing or adding anything.
Well, yeah, the tanks were already in the ground.
Yeah. Um. Additional factors, nature and character of activities, processes, materials, equipment or conditions or operation, either specifically or typically associated with the use. These are things we had to consider, which I think we probably did in our conversations. Ve- vehicular circulation and parking areas, outdoor activities, storage and work areas, hours of operation, production of traffic, noise, vibration, smoke, fumes, odors, dust, glare, light, or other public nuisances. I feel like we considered all of those as we were discussing.
Did you guys say you painted the building?
We did.
Cleaned it up?
When we came the first time. But we are getting painted again.
Okay.
Um, so automotive use standards, the setbacks they'll have to go to ZBA for. Um.
All the other standards have to do with canopy.
Right.
Except for the lighting.
Um.
Which we'll add as a condition.
Yep. All right.
I have one, one more question.
Yep.
Um, the vegetation that is overgrown in the, on the screen wall, which is kind of nice because it gives some greenery. Are, is there any plan to take that brush out?
It's all going to get cleaned up.
It's all going to get cleaned up? Do we want it cleaned up?
I, I think it, it looks a little messy right now, so.
It looks a little messy.
I thought he indicated that that was the adjacent property owner's shrubbery. Did I misunderstand?
The grass.
The gr, yeah.
Yeah, the grass.
The green area, the green space. Um, so, yeah, it's a little messy.
Yeah. I, I, I hear you, but the being scrub.
I think it needs to be cleaned up.
Yeah, and at the very least, painted, that wall once cleaned up.
Probably, it's probably a rack underneath that, all that.
Yeah.
Greenery.
But I feel like code will be looking at all of that, right?
Right.
Okay.
Um.
Would code mandate a fresh coat of paint on that?
I don't know that we can, I don't know that we can demand a fresh coat of paint.
It's an existing structure.
Yeah.
Right.
We, yeah?
No.
No.
I'm prepared to make a motion if you're ready.
I'm ready.
You ready?
Is everybody ready? Okay.
Actually, I should have pulled it up before I said I was. I will make a motion to recommend approval of PSU O2 dash 25 for 2114 11 Mile Road. Subject to the following. Uh, ZBA variance being obtained for the front yard setback. Shielding of the lights is required by ordinance. The trees and shrubs along Henley to be trimmed to accommodate the corner clearance requirement of the ordinance. And, um, the installation of substantial landscaping planters along Henley to clearly delineate the sidewalk to the extent practicable, practicable. Uh, at the, as determined appropriate by the community development director. Alternatively, uh, converting some of the pace, pavement adjacent to Henley in the northeast corner to some sort of green space.
Does that feel okay to you?
Yeah. Yep.
Someone needs a second, you're all smiling and nodding.
So, one, oh wait, one question. So, if for some reason we go out to the site and the tanks cannot maneuver, if there's planters here, if this is converted to green space, could those planters be placed elsewhere on the site as a last resort? Yes, I think there needs to be some planter, at, at least personally, I think there needs to be some planters no matter what. That's where we would particularly like that.
So, so we did say as practicable at the discretion of the community development.
So that will be the, of the first, second, and third choice, that would be the third choice.
The third choice is planters somewhere other than the right way.
Yep, okay, just want to make sure.
Now it's safe?
Was there already a second?
Second.
You want to call the roll?
Yes.
Commissioner Dolan?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamami?
Yes.
Commissioner Ernstman?
Yes.
Commissioner Woods?
Yes.
Chair Kempner?
Yes.
Motion passes. Good luck at ZBA and at City Council. Next up is a public hearing, an ordinance to amend Article Two. I don't have to read all of that, do I? To amend some of the stuff. All right, Kristen, do you want to talk us through this? Yes. Um, so, as we started to use the zoning ordinance, there are lots of little things we're finding as we are applying things that we really need, mostly to, to clarify, in some instances, a thing or two got left off. I can go through each one of these if you guys want me to, or I can just say, as detailed in the staff review. I did read the staff review. So, if you have any questions on any of these things, I'm happy to answer them. There'll be another round of this coming again.
I don't think it, it's too crazy of an idea that there's going to be a few tweaks here and there.
Yep, and that.
Newly remodeled zoning ordinance.
And that's what these mostly are. Yes.
Just out of curiosity, did these come about because of a particular project, or are these just things you guys were sitting around at the lunch table?
No, all of these, or, I shouldn't, I don't know if it's every single one, but the majority of these came about because we are trying to apply the ordinance, and that could either be, um, a lot of times through residential zoning certificates and things like that, when people are putting accessory structures in. Um, or sometimes they're prompted by a phone call, someone's interested in a site, and we're trying to tell them what they can and can't do with it. And as we're going through the ordinance, a hole appears.
So these are tweaks to real-world things that have.
Yep. So, real quick, just to get it out of the way, let me open the public hearing at seven fifty. There's literally nobody here anymore, so I am also closing it at seven fifty. I'm, did we get any? No, no, nothing mailed or emailed. Um. Let's have another ordinance amendment. Or an ordinance issue. Okay. I don't know if I should mention it now while we're just talking about ordinance men- ordinance issues, or if I should mention it later.
Well, if we're doing a second round and we're already here for the public hearing.
Right, there will be a round two, there are things that we found, even since I've noticed this, that we've got a round two list going. So, today, no, not today, a few days ago, and then today I went through and like really looked, because I was like, why don't we have a site plan for this, right? Like, for today's thing. So I went and looked, and the first place I went was the site plan review. And then I got like, I was like, why don't we have a site plan, because it says, "All proposed or permitted uses and related buildings," um, building structures, uses, oh, yeah, "Any proposed special uses and related buildings or building types subject to special approval, including any alteration, addition, or expansion, or an existing building subject to special land approval." And I was like, well, that sounds like I should have a site plan, but then, when I went to non-conforming, it says, "You don't need a site plan there." So, let's see, this was fifteen point O two B, is where I found that. I think that we might already have this around two, would you mind sending me an email? Yeah. This too. Um, I would just point out that they turned in the sketch plan, right, in this particular instance is a good example, because they were not touching the site at all. The burden for them to hire an architect to draw up a site plan when we can just see it on Google Maps. Right.
But, I will push back on that a little bit, because it is very easy to take Google Maps, you can do distances on Google Maps, and fairly easily convert it to a schematic that is, would be better than a hand-drawn.
That at least gives us distances.
Yeah, because it's not, if you look at that sketch, it's not.
It's not to scale, no, definitely not.
Proportion, I mean, look at the, where the building falls in relationship to, you know, it's.
And, and for enforcement purposes, for future violations, you're going to have problems.
And it would be nice to have been like, okay, you got thirty feet from here to here, you've got plenty of room to cut out pavement and do this.
Maybe we could add something like a scaled drawing, I, we do have people who don't know how to do what you just described, and they want to just get out a piece of graph paper and.
And that's fine, if they do it on a piece of graph paper and make it to scale.
Yeah, right, right.
I don't have fun with that.
I mean.
So maybe the, the idea just to scale is, would make my OCD engineering brain happy.
Yeah. Um, okay, so that was just my, my notes to make, and I will send you an email. Yes, and we can include that in round two. Um, because I was like going back and forth, but, and then I was like, but what, what does it say here, what does it say here, just to kind of make sure. Which is exactly how I came up with this list. Right, right. All right, so does anybody have questions, thoughts, issues, et cetera, with the zoning ordinance, ordinance amendments?
No. Nope.
Um, do we have to, are we recommending these for approval as well, right? Anyone, anyone besides Lisa, come on?
I recommend approval for the, can I, wait, I should call it by its.
The ordinance?
I don't have to read that whole thing either, do I?
Right.
See agenda.
Um, the zoning ordinance cleanup amendments?
There you go.
Does that work?
That's fine, yeah.
As presented.
As presented in tonight's meeting.
Second.
Do you call roll? Yes. Commissioner Hamami?
Yes.
Commissioner Ernstman?
Yes.
Commissioner Woods?
Yes.
Commissioner Dolan?
Yes.
And Chair Kempner?
Yes.
Thank you. Community Development Annual Report. So, this is what you all get every year, details all the activities that you did, that ZBA has done, um, and also includes just general administrative information on the Community Development Department. The Michigan Planning Enabling Act requires the Planning Commission to prepare an annual report, we just expand it to include the whole department. It's also part of our redevelopment-ready communities requirements, so if you have any questions, let me know.
I have a question, I read in the paper, I think it was in the Detroit News, Tubby's is going to be a stay-up late. Um, burger joint?
Yes.
Cool.
They're not changing anything really.
Yeah, they're not coming, they're not changing news, so they don't need to come before us.
They will not be before you guys, I think they're painting the building. Looked like they were fixing the landscaping today, so that. Yes, I saw that too, that is exciting.
Is that why they fixed the payment, or did they not have that tenant yet, when, because they fixed the payment a long time ago.
They, I think that they submitted their application for a business license at least two or three months ago now. But they could have been talking to them.
Yeah, that's true.
For, oh, oh, much longer before that. And something I failed to mention in communications and kind of goes with the annual report is, um, we won a public engagement award for the zoning ordinance from the Michigan Association of Planning.
Yay. Y'all get Oscars?
No, I don't.
Engagement?
A gold star, maybe? Yeah, a public engagement award for the, the engagement efforts we did for the zoning ordinance, so.
So it wasn't about the zoning ordinance itself, it was about how we handled it?
Yes.
I have one more question about that, that restaurant, as a mother of a junior high schooler. Um, do you happen to know what the hours are, and if it'll be open for lunch for the high schoolers?
They would be stupid not to.
No, I thought it said like, three PM to like midnight or something, or?
I, I, I think that.
It's op- they're open at three AM.
I don't know what you're talking about.
So the former Tubby's is going to be Buns and Patties, it's called, it's like.
What's it called?
Buns and patties, it's hamburgers and fries, and I'm not sure what else is on the menu, but that kind of food, supposed to be like your late-night hangout place. I don't know if they plan to be open for lunch, but I would bet they would pretty soon realize that's a good call. Lot of money to be made there.
I just found your news article.
Lake Owl, right, kind of that side, where they're open late.
Yeah. Do we have to accept that annual report? Yes, please do. Okay. Someone else make a motion, everybody's making a motion today. Eric, you're making a motion now.
Yeah, uh, what, motion to accept the Community Development Annual Report for this year?
Perfect.
Second.
Awesome. The, can this be an all-in-favor? Yes. All-in-favor? Aye. Opposed, we have accepted that annual report. And now, Planning Commission Bylaws and Rules of Procedure. So recently, the City Council adopted a Boards and Commissions Hand- Handbook, I included it in your packets. I know that there are some references to Planning Commission that are wrong, so we're correcting that, it lists nine members, for example, instead of seven, so we'll correct those small things. But the big change is that you no longer have to excuse absences. Uh, so, in our Bylaws and Rules of Procedure, it included that. So, um, I presented a draft that removes that, it also just references the Board and Commission Handbook for resignation procedures, because that's covered in there too. If you're going through the handbook, it was really geared towards, uh, the advisory, uh, Boards and Commissions more than it was geared towards Planning Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals. So, there are some things in there, for example, that the Chair prepares the agendas. Well, we do things a little bit differently, because we're more, um, of a formal body than some of the other advisory commissions and boards. So you don't need to worry about that, uh, we've sorted that out with the City Clerk's Office, but I just wanted to make sure our rules and, uh, procedure, uh, rules of procedure and bylaws matched or referenced the handbook. And if you have any other changes, let me know.
I'm just curious, why did we remove the excused absences requirement?
So, there was some concern that the Boards and Commission members did not want to be the arbiter to decide whether or not an absence should count as excused or not. They didn't want to be the people that would decide whether a reason was valid or not. Like, if you're sick, that may be a valid reason, but what happens if your kid's sick? Does that count as an excused absence, or should you have still come? If you had a vacation scheduled, should you have scheduled your vacation around the Board or Commission meeting? It left you all, which I know, I don't think we ever had an unexcused absence that everyone voted no on, but it left you all as the deciding group, whether or not the excuse that was provided was valid. Also, I thought it wasn't really our business what the excuses sometimes.
So, but I, just, just devil's advocate, I mean, our duty is to appear at meetings.
So there's still that aspect in there.
I understand that, but if somebody's running against you, um, they're going to throw out there that you missed all these absences that weren't excused by your Planning Commission. I mean, that, to me, it was just a layer of protection, as opposed to, so, devil's advocate, to me, it was more protection that your absences were excused, and someone who just sees that you missed two or three meetings doesn't just say, well, they, they missed two or three meetings. Nobody ever addressed it at the planning, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
That's all, I was just curious why.
That was the thought behind it.
Yeah.
It does include now, um, if you miss more than twenty-five percent of the meetings, or four consecutive meetings, that that can come into play, specifically when the City Council is deciding whether or not to reappoint. And at that time, I think you would want to share, I had, I've had an unusual work commitment, or I was seriously ill, or, or whatever it happens to be, and they would take that into account.
I'm s- I'm in support, I was just curious where it came from.
All right, um. We need to approve the Planning Commission Bylaws and Rules?
Yes.
Uh, motion to approve Planning Commission Bylaws and Rules as presented.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, they are approved. Discussion of training needs. So, um, every year, as part of our redevelopment-ready communities certification, which we're almost at, um, we have to have a joint meeting with another body, so that can be Zoning Board of Appeals, it can be City Council. I think you mentioned Commissioner Hamami, that you attended a training put on by Carlisle Wortman that was very helpful and kind of general in nature. So I wanted to see what the Planning Commission thought of partnering up with the Zoning Board of Appeals, or the City Council, or both, to talk through, uh, motion-making, and running a meeting, and just a good refresher on all of those things, and then maybe also, you guys have had a lot of opportunity to get familiar with the new zoning ordinance, but the Zoning Board of Appeals and the City Council haven't had as much of an opportunity. So maybe, um, to touch base too on what are the significant changes and how they might affect the Boards and Commissions. Or, if you have other ideas for training, I thought, I thought it'd be an opportunity to, to join up with someone. Um, love you City Council, but also, um, I think one of the things they don't always get is that idea that they are putting on an administrative hat when our stuff comes to them, like a special land use, right? Um, and that they're supposed to kind of look at it along the same rules that we do, so, uh, you know. Putting that into the training, I think is also a good idea, um.
I think the training is a great idea, I just don't know about combining them. And the reason I say that is because, um, we all have different roles. Um, the training that I spoke to you about that I had in one of my communities was specific to special land uses.
Okay.
And it was the Planning Commission and the Township Board in that community, because none of them understood how to apply the factors, and what's required, and how to make motions, and defensible motions. And so it made sense, in that context, to do it for Planning Commission and City Council. A more parliamentary procedure-type, um, type training? I think that would be fine across the board, because that's more general and not specific to duties of each administrative body. Like, we've done ZBA, we've done variances, and use variances, and dimensional variants, and gone through all of it, similar to the way we've done special land use, we do that for ZBA. But ZBA is the only one that applies those, so, uh, so depending on the context, I, I, I'm not sure that a global training is appropriate.
If we did something just Planning Commission, would you all be interested in something, and what would the topic be? I, you do a good job of going through the special land use standards.
Do we do a good job of making motions, though?
Motion-making would be helpful, I think.
Because I, I.
I mean, I think we've gotten a lot, lot better. I agree.
Well, I think, I think that is a problem in almost all communities, that we train them, we tell them, you need to state your findings in your motion, but nobody does, and in fact, we didn't today. Um, but we said them during the, the meeting, so I think that that's at least helpful.
So much covers it.
Yeah. But those are things that.
I think it'd be great, I mean, go through the, you know, here's, here's a good workflow for what you're looking for, how to present it back in a motion, and.
So, I think the special land use for both City Council and Planning Commission would be good, because they don't realize that they have to go through the same analysis that we do.
Yes, so it might be a little redundant for you guys in some aspects, because you do go through each of those. A special land use and how to make a motion defensible for that, right?
But remember how long that training might be, and you're going to lose people. So if you just do little segments of pertinent.
Yeah, that might be a better route, too, because it's like, oh, it's.
But also, what, getting somebody here, I think it's easier to get somebody here for a three-hour meeting and take a twenty-minute break in the middle for everybody to stand up than it is to have them come out for an hour meeting here and an hour meeting here.
I disagree.
You under, you overestimate.
Yeah, I disagree.
Okay.
I mean, we're not, and we don't have to do them once a week for a month, like, they could be spread out in significant timeframes. And then you can have one that's all three parliamentary procedure, I've put that present, I actually have PowerPoint presentations that I do at the Michigan Townships Association on that topic. presentations that I do at the Michigan Townships Association on that topic. So, it's, I mean, I could do it in an hour.
Okay.
Not that I, not that I would do it, but.
Yes. So, I will talk to the Clerk's Office, and we'll see if we can't get a couple of things on the calendar, maybe doing special land use and motion making, and then maybe a separate parliamentary procedure one, including ZBA two. We'll stay tuned. But if you have any other ideas, email me.
Do you know, they're not doing any virtual sessions during the planner.
That COVID ship has sailed.
That was so convenient.
Yeah, it was nice.
Yes, I agree.
Because they weren't like, I went through and I was like, oh, there are a couple of topics that sound very interesting, but.
You have to go to like Franklin's.
And it's in October, which is not my month to travel anywhere, so. Um, all right. So, do you have the information you need on training needs?
Yeah, if I need more clarification, I'll just throw it on another meeting, and we can keep talking about it.
Perfect. So, then we are going to go to election of officers.
So, Commissioner Bardis has been absent quite, quite a few meetings, and he wanted me to share with you, he has a work project that he is committed to through the end of this calendar year, and then he will be more available. But he's very interested in continuing to serve on the Planning Commission. However, because of that work commitment, he feels like he should not be the vice chair. He was your current vice chair, so he would not like to be renominated.
But he doesn't want to resign?
No. He, by December, he said he should be wrapped up. He just happens to be out of town on Tuesday nights.
Is there something that needs to be done for his absences?
So, you don't have to excuse them anymore. I'm in, the Clerk's Office is now the holder of that type of information, so I'm sharing with them, and then Council can take that into account.
Do we have alternatives that are waiting, or I guess in the queue, so to speak?
That want to be on Planning Commission? No, I think we have to beg every time.
I'm guessing yes, because I applied for three years before I got appointed. Unless, unless I was just blackballed.
I, I don't, I'd have to look at the folder. I don't know offhand. I mean, his term is still continuing. It would be up to Council if they wanted to ask him to resign or anything like that. I haven't gotten any feedback like that.
But is that, so, I, I'm thinking, because when I served on ZBA like 15 years ago, I think we had two alternates, and they would just get filtered in if we didn't have a quorum or something.
So, we don't have alternates for Planning Commission?
We're not allowed to.
Really? Why is that?
The statute doesn't provide for it.
I never realized that before.
One of them, I think it's Planning Commission, the statute doesn't provide for it, but ZBA does.
Right, we do have the two alternates for ZBA.
Yeah, so.
All right, so Chair, I'm willing to be Chair again. Does anybody want to like arm wrestle me for it?
No.
I'll nominate you.
I'll suck it.
Um, that's an all in favor, right?
Yeah.
All in favor of me continuing to be Chair?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. So, that one's out of the way. Anyone want to be Vice Chair that knows they're going to be here for the next year for sure?
I'll do it.
Thanks.
Because you're usually here, Jesus.
I am usually here.
But if you do go, you gotta, you gotta hook me up with your notes.
Yes, yes, 1,000%.
Would be good if we're getting that training done, right?
That'll be handy, I might be.
All right, does somebody, does anybody want to fight her for it, or make a motion?
Motion for.
Or a nomination, sorry.
I nominate Commissioner Dolan to be Vice Chair for the Planning Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
You feel so sweet.
You have to make motions to adjourn them.
Is that the rule?
Isn't it?
It's not really, I mean, but I'll say, when I, when I had Greg, he was like, he was on the ball. If I breathed too long, he was making that motion to adjourn.
There you go.
Um.
I'm on it.
And we need a secretary as well, right?
Yes.
Yes. Whose job is to, I don't know, fill in if I'm not there and the vice chair is not there.
Correct.
If you left, you guys can help for it.
I mean, I can do it if you want.
Perfect.
I would be up for it.
Someone want to nominate him and second him?
Michael, do you want to, oh, you did that, sorry. You did, Commissioner Dolan. You can do it.
Okay, I nominate Commissioner Eric Arms, Armsman for Secretary.
Thank you. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations. All right, liaison reports.
That's all there is. I don't have to write.
Nope, nope, she does act, all the actual secretarying.
That's correct.
Only up, her and I are gone.
And if you're gone too, we scurry to try and figure out, wait, how do we figure out who's next? All right, yes.
You said liaison.
Liaison reports?
Okay. Um, let's see here, the Chamber of Commerce, I forgot his name, but the, the current Vice President stepped down, and they elected a new Vice President, Andrew Creel, I think in plans for him to take over once the current President steps down at the end of the year.
Is he on ZBA?
Yes.
Okay.
He is? Interesting. Um, they had some different discussions, they were kind of going through different procedures. I guess the big thing is next month, September 25th, is the Berkeley Pub Pro.
What?
Bookly.
Thursday, so they put that one on. The other Art Bash or whatever, we didn't have a meeting, so I couldn't announce that.
Is anybody else?
I did not go up at the ZBA.
We have a new DDA Director. I meet with him tomorrow. And I have a Bookly meeting tomorrow in the gazebo at 6:30. So, if anybody really wants to like help with all things Bookly, come to the gazebo tomorrow at 6:30.
Tell Nate I said hi.
I will.
Do you want to know how I know him?
I, 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 sure. How do you know him?
He was a South Lion DDA Director, and I represent South Lion.
Nice, okay. Um, any other liaison? Commissioner reports? I'm going to jump in and say, today is my daughter's birthday, and since she has to share mom with the Planning Commission, I'm going to use this moment to like give her a little shout out and say, happy birthday, Abiana.
Happy birthday!
Staff comments?
Nothing.
All righty.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, meeting adjourned at 8:15.
Yeah, you're kind of low.